Being live, of being alive too. So, we're gonna head on in here to the Southmont Borough Council meeting. It's always a good time. Don't really know if I have anything to chat about today. Maybe I do, maybe I don't. We'll see. Head in. I gotta be honest, I didn't want to come out today. I didn't leave my house. I didn't want to be outside. Kind of afraid to be outside anymore, afraid I'm gonna get shot. So... Doing this for you.
So, is he doing the mapping of the system? Is it you?
Talking storm system?
Yeah.
Chris Sawyer's gonna send the information up.
This was sitting beside... The agenda, which I will show you in a moment. I'm curious. There it is.
Yeah, there's a program out there called Diamond Maps. It's GIS software. Google Earth as a backdrop. And that's what we recommend overall. If we're gonna get through this.
So, we're gonna have to do a lot to do.
Well, the problem is like Chris was describing, why are you at all? Changing your own call system?
Exactly. And then on last night? So, are they allowed to use? They are allowed to use the test again.
Yes. This is gonna be a more... State becoming less...
Well, they make mouthfuls up here.
Come on, you're vicious.
Oh, yeah.
Here, you can have this one, I'm done with it. No problem, Sherri. I scanned it, but I pretty much know the way it's gonna go.
Okay.
Thanks. I just wanna appreciate the pomp and circumstance of the actual necessity of a gavel, Doug. I appreciate that. If nobody else in the room does, at least I do.
With all the meaning to order, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, and please mute your voices.
Anthony Piper.
Here.
Doug Barry.
Here.
Richard Burkert.
Here.
Herb Ewong. Eugene Capcella.
Here.
Seth McBecker.
Here.
Bob Morgan.
Here.
Sherry Spiker.
Here.
Public comment. There's a five-minute timer, women. Please clearly state your name and where you reside.
Palmer. 314 Cheney Oak Drive. Okay. I think you have a copy of the handouts. Okay. Today, as promised, I believe I did this on social media, I'm going to inform those present events that I witnessed on Cheney Oak Drive. This is only for information purposes and not to project blame on anyone. On 9/27/24, I observed a three-hour intervention at the neighbors'. Many departments responded, and I am grateful for their help. On 10/17/24, I found that I am not the only person living in Southmont Borough living to a neighbor that has outrageous behavior. Someone has to stand up and speak out on crime. Live in a safe, enjoyable community and not accept outrageous behavior. We can do better. Light pollution. Light is useful and often necessary, but when there's too much in the wrong place of the wrong quality, that's when we see the negative effects called light pollution. Light trespass. Light falling where it is neither wanted nor needed, often creating a nuisance. My source for this is the Smithsonian Institute. How does it impact Cheney Oak Drive? The use of a glaring spotlight on Cheney Oak Drive shining down to Susan Drive perhaps would impair one's ability to see clearly. We need forward thinkers, be proactive, not reactive. Not doing things because that's how we always did it. That method is not working. Code violations. Noise ordinances. Today, at 5:00 AM, there was a leaf blowing, someone blowing leaves in the driveway and washing their car. That's what I heard at 5:00 AM underneath my bedroom window, therefore waking me up. On 10/14 at midnight, turning on the roof lights, blowing his horn several times, and finally taking a drill and removing the door from its hinges, this went on for a few hours. And again, at 3:00 AM, the person was washing their car with a hose, buckets, and spotlights. The woman who reported people blasting music at 4:00 AM, she does have a point. I was informed by two different people, versions about the garbage. Version one, after looking at photos of 12 contractor bags, shopping bags, such as Giant Eagle, just tossed out, the person stood in their portico and just tossed out the garbage bags where garbage would normally be collected. And the poor garbage men had to clean up that mess. Also left for the garbage department to take out was drywall and plywood, stuffed animals, huge stuffed animals. Later, I was told by the secretary, I believe that's Debbie, that there was no limit on garbage. So, what is the correct answer? I am here to perhaps get an answer for that today. The report, the woman who reported, she lives in Harding Street, I believe. She reported a garbage issue with multiple bags left out, long-term, rats getting in there. She has a point. After reading some of these things, I've realized that I am not the only person living in Southmont Borough that has an issue. And I wouldn't say that this is not a personal issue about me and the neighbor. This is an ongoing. Now, finally, I want to leave you with this thought. When the neighborhood fails, the community fails. When the community fails, society fails. Thank you.
Thank you.
Had some comments. I want to comment on a couple of things she said. First things first, if you don't like what your neighbors do, you can always move, okay? I've reported similar things like you have about the leaf blower. I've reported to the West Hills Regional Police regarding a snow blower being used at 5:00 in the morning. And literally Officer Chris Kestlock said to me, "I will not cite somebody for using a snow blower during the snow." So, there's your answer for that, okay? They don't have to bother wasting their time answering. The thing about the garbage, like you said, no bag limits, there are no bag limits. So, if people want to put out as much garbage as they want to, that's the way the contract is written. There are no bag limits, so people can put out as much garbage as they want to. I would suggest to some people that have this notion that you have the right to look on your neighbor's property and tell them what the fuck they think they can do, you don't. You have the right to look on your property. And if you don't like what they're doing, either A, move or don't look, okay? It gets a little bit ridiculous when people come down to this Borough Council and try to use it against their neighbors for stuff like this. You know, I have situations going on where I report stuff to the police where people harass me and threaten to shoot me, okay? And they don't do shit, okay? So, what is so fucking funny, you old prick? What is so... Answer my question, what is so funny?
This is not a question and answer.
Look in the mirror?
Just make your comments. It's not a question and answer.
I understand it's not a question and answer period. Eric, you are a district attorney, you work for...
First of all, this is the Southmont Borough meeting.
Don't interrupt me.
I'm just clarifying, it's not a district attorney's meeting, go ahead.
Let me clarify that you work for the district attorney's office in the capacity that you are a prosecutor. I've come down here how many times and reported crimes that you don't do shit about, okay? So, where do I get some sort of satisfaction, okay? Upper Yoder Township has a policy, if you don't get any satisfaction, then you have to sue them in federal court, okay? I'm getting a little bit tired of coming. And everybody looks at me, okay? And either A, thinks I'm a joke because I use two words you don't like or words that aren't proper. Have you ever used that word? Has anybody on this board ever used that word? I can promise you, you have, okay? No, don't on with it. I still have some more time to speak, Herb, so I'll take every minute that I have, okay? I don't know what it takes. Let me reiterate something too. Let me be completely clear about something. I know everybody sitting behind that desk hates my fucking guts, okay? And you won't do a thing to help me because you do. They will cite Officer Discretion and not do a thing to help me, okay? What's it gonna take? What's it gonna take? Is it gonna take Sarah Deschongtoth putting a gun to my head, putting a 9mm Kimber to my head, and pulling the trigger till you people do something? What's it gonna take? What is so funny about that, Bob? What is so funny about somebody threatening to shoot me with a Kimber 9mm? You were on the police, are you still on the police commission? I think you are. Are you still on the police commission? Why won't they do anything for me? Why? Because I try to hold people accountable? Because when my driveway was stolen, I didn't like it and I complained, okay? Because when Herb puts up, when Herb's gonna laugh at me and put out a permanent structure in the easement, when other people in my neighborhood have to go and get, have to go through the process, he just does it and nothing happens to him? Don't you think that'd be a little bit frustrating after years and years and years of this shit that I have to put up with and this shit that I have to endure? And then because I use that word, because I use the word shit or fuck, okay? That you won't listen to a word I say? Which I have every right to use those words if I choose to. And you can't stop me from using those words. I'm not threatening anybody, okay? And those words don't harm anybody. I can guarantee everybody's gonna go home tonight and watch those words on their Netflix or their Hulu or on TV, and they're gonna hear those words. I can guarantee probably most of you people at work use those words every day. But you're gonna chastise me because... Well, God forbid somebody actually react to being treated shitty. God forbid somebody stand up for themselves. Now, what do I have to do to get somebody to do something about the people that have harassed me and the people that have actually defamed me? What kind of police action do I get when somebody says they are going to put, they have a Kimber 9MM and they carry it at all times, and they're gonna use it against me? Please answer my question. Okay, comment, okay. I don't even know if Amanda started the timer, but I think I'm out of time. I'm not gonna take any more of your time. I'm getting a little bit tired of this, okay? Please, everybody here has my email address. You can reach out to me, okay? You're all human beings, and I think you guys are all decent human beings, okay? Get past the fact that this is the way I speak. Somebody reach out, please, and see if... I ask for help every month. I've asked for help for months and months and months and months and months, and nothing gets done. Please, that's all I have to say, thanks, have a good day.
Do we have anybody else for public comment? I don't see any correspondence listed. I need a motion to approve the September 16th, 2024 meeting minutes. Moved by Sherry, seconded by Richard. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the October 8th, 2024 MS 4 and Finance Committee minutes. Motion by Sherry, third and second.
Second.
Second by Bob. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. West Hills Regional Police?
Police Department had 363 calls for service for the month of September. 66 of those were in Southmont Borough, were 768 in a year. Eight traffic citations were issued, five warnings. The other major issue was there was a vehicle stolen in Southmont Borough in Upper Yoder.
Any questions for Chief?
I do like more reports. Much easier to read and check.
I don't see anyone from the fire company here today. Amanda, was there another update, Sherry?
Nope.
Engineers report?
Flow meters are still in, they'll likely be removed before next month's meeting, come in winter. Aside from that, just been providing supporting information cost estimates for Amanda with some different grant application. And that's all we have.
Any questions, Todd?
So, we're only getting much out of the flow meters this year with a little monitoring.
Yeah, I mean...
So, we're still working on our totals?
I did double check today. We submitted a flow reduction plan in March of 2023. That was by consent order. Part of the strategy in that plan was to finish the weather inspection, follow up on necessary repairs, keep the flow meters in. And that's been 18 months, we've never heard anything from the department.
So, all those fines that they were threatening us if we didn't relax Y and Z.
Any other questions for Todd? Solicitors report?
The only issue that I have is the kind of beginning Southmont Borough's only board here, the decision that was appealed to, the Court of Commerce. Waiting for a decision from Judge Canary. That has not been received at this point. Once we get that decision, I'll be able to report back to the council as to the next step in that litigation.
Any questions for Eric?
Property maintenance report. When we stand on that, if there's still stuff on it from Slide 3, and we get the answer, you don't make contact with the owner. Well, the owner has to pay the taxes every month, and we should be able to watch the owner. There's someone that's over here. And I think that's a little bit crazy. It's not a war than here. I think we need to start doing something, put some pieces in the report, don't do it alone.
The issue there is the property owner is listed in the, sometimes the property owner is an LLC or corporation. I think the issue there was identifying an individual who is the president, CEO of those entities. And I, about a month, maybe two months ago, I did provide a listing of those, the owners of these different entities. I think that's rare. At this point, that's why there's been some changes in the status of these, this report. Looks like there did, there are two new ones that don't have identification. So, I'll reach out to local municipal again and ask them if there's any assistance they can offer, provide them with some additional information. There's a new entity on this list that doesn't have identification, that isn't the owner of that entity.
We did this work with our own people, they never... No. Did something about it. Now, it's just on and on and on. And people, if they're paying their taxes, they should be contacted. Well, just pray though. Either do what you asked to do, or there's gonna be some charges, that's all. We can't wait on this organization. In fact, we talked about dumping it before. Even more, she can't run.
Any other questions for Eric? State commissioner's report?
State commissioner's report. I don't have much that I can add. Utility truck, it's the fuel pump. We're only getting 350 PSI, we need 500 in the vehicle to fill. But if we do what we're supposed to, we'll get that back, and all the vehicle will be open on again.
Any questions? Okay, borough manager's report?
So, what's your question, Dale? I think I needed was approval to purchase the solar radar sign we were talking about. It's one that can be moved wherever we need it to. It's also about the flashing slow down and too fast. For this one, the cost is $3,953. And this is one that Richland and Westwood both use, and they've given good reviews on it, so... I'd make that mention.
Second, second.
I have a question.
Been moved by Sherry, seconded by Bob. Any further discussion?
I have a question. Is the speed trailer still available, working available?
Still working, I guess. It would probably be put away for the winter, though.
You're opening 2,000 long out, like you have nothing. Because that thing never, it records everything, but nothing's ever gone by, so...
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor, so take it though. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mayor's report?
Nothing.
Discussion items, I have nothing for administrative borough services, community planning and improvements. There's not an update yet on the active transportation plan. We're still waiting on a draft from the consultant. Richard, is there any updates on the grant for the comprehensive plan?
January identification, I submitted a budget request for matching on the presumption that will be five municipalities participating.
Emergency management?
Nothing.
Finance?
Couple things. So, we've got the budget done. There were, I just wanted to bring to the council's attention, there were three appeals, tax appeals. And every one of those appeals were approved and reduced by almost half. So, with the appeals that were approved, Southmont's total is gonna be $2,330 that we will not be receiving in taxes on those. I can't, the Tax Appeal Board did what they needed to do. When you do the common level ratio against the assessment, the new assessment falls more in line with what the property values are. So, I think we'll be seeing more of these. I think we saw, what, six last year, Amanda? Yes. Three more this year. So, every time this happens, we're losing tax dollars, plus we've lost a couple of properties in the borough. So, that just means we have to be very careful with the budget.
These are all commercial properties?
No. Well, I'm sorry, two multifamilies and one commercial property. Yeah. A four unit on State, four unit on Diamond, and then the Pick 'Em Trace, Montrory. So, I'm just making you aware of the fact that this is kind of the trend now. And we're not seeing as many, we're not seeing as much money coming in on our transfer tax. So, we're okay with this budget, but, you know, we'll just have to keep an eye on it in the future. So, was it for that? And then, when it, going over the budget, we talked about getting, using our guys to do the grass cutting services instead of contracting that out. But that's going to need that zero turn, trade it in, and another. Amanda, correct, another one done. So, we have enough manpower, correct, Sam, to do the grassing. We don't do the field anymore. So, I would tell council that might be a good thing to think about there. That's about it as far as that goes. And then with the MS 4, are we ready yet or no? So, with the MS 4, we will need, we will need to approve, we need, yeah, we need approval on that, right, Amanda? On the... On the completing our mapping system for the storm waters. And that will not affect our... We should be able to do that with from what we have budgeted. So that's not a concern on the budget. It's just something we need to finish our storm water mapping. And has a lot of the information already from when we get the sewer. And so they'll finish that up on the computer systems and whatever else they need to.
So can we get a motion to approve stiffle megrosis is to complete storm water system mapping?
So...
Go to second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Greater Drunkstown Water Authority?
Last month when I told you about how lead in the water distribution system was gonna be addressed, the letters were forthcoming. Those were kind of looked at by the board at our last meeting last Thursday. And just last week sometime, Attorney Barvin, who is our solicitor, said that the rules for the EPA came out to tell us what portions of the water distribution, when they are addressed, have to be addressed by the water authority person, the homeowner. And that's still unclear, but it may either... Whatever, there's gonna be a cost to the water authority or it may be higher depending on how the rules are interpreted finally. But that's not yet, you know, Attorney Barvin. I can go through a nine-page document overnight. So we'll get that information soon. Those letters should be done out soon.
Any questions for Eugene? I have nothing for personnel today. Always Bob.
No.
Property maintenance streets and sidewalks match.
I'd like to give an immediate statement. Possibly look at things that we've done in the past. Whether the board has done the task for homeowners if they wanna fix their sidewalks. Probably Bob mentioned there's a... Some sort of concrete. I think concrete you can mix in. I mean, if they want to fix their sidewalks or whatever. Possibly looking towards something, you know, to offer that or whatever. But other than that, no, I don't know of a lot.
Okay. Save a tree.
Again, nothing new. I've been planning with Barb Hegg, who's the landscape architect, who's working on the active transportation project and planning for that. To do a tree survey, digitize the maintenance program. Working with Arbus. Will submitting... We'll be submitting an application if approved by his body. And a little later than April first of that year, I've submitted a budget request. They require twenty percent matching funds, which can... It's a TCNR Bureau four street. And twenty percent minimum price, fifty thousand dollars. Some are all matched. It comes from in kind, although, you know, given the specialized nature of the work, I'm not entirely sure what... And then, you know, just available time. You know, what part of that we can do. We're in personnel. But we'll talk about this way closer to the application.
We have in the budget the five thousand five hundred.
That's really the plan.
That had been approved. And Amanda, you said you had about an extra three thousand? But we do not have...
The ten.
We don't have the ten. So you'd have to... We'd have to... That unit hasn't come up before, so that would be something the council would have to make a decision on.
I... We don't have any new or old business. Business items, pre-ratification of payroll, nine seventeen through ten twenty-one and twenty-four. Make a motion.
I'd make a motion.
Go to second. Moving and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approved payment of bills, nine seventeen through ten twenty-one and twenty-four.
I'd make that motion.
Go to second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approved transfers, nine seventeen through ten twenty-one and twenty-four.
I'd make that motion.
Go to second.
Second.
All... Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approved Treasurers report for September of twenty twenty-four.
I'd make that motion.
Go to second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The motion to accept the tax collector's report for September of twenty twenty-four.
Make the motion to accept the tax collector's report.
Go to second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Make a motion for adjournment.
I... I've been approached several times by two neighbors. They'd like to have a street bike put in. A value street. It's not on front of mine. I don't feel it goes up or down. But I have made the request. Because I would request to fly down to check it out. If we run foot to Mel and D, then that would be a good time to put in to install a light grid. And I would take care of the damage request. As I said, doesn't matter to me. It's very important.
Amanda, can you get that? I don't have the streets to look at it.
On the street bike that's let us down. I've got it fixed. I called it in the morning. It's twelve fifteen. I had to fix that thing. And it's been like that for probably two years. And the money you save there, you can fire off another street bike even. It's just, you know, part time. So it's up to the board what they're gonna do. I know. Doesn't matter who owns it. It doesn't own the act. Major reports. Just giving it to me.
Thanks, sir. All right. Motion to adjourn.
I'd make that motion.
All right. Go to second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very firm.
Go ahead and ask. Good job. Good job. Right in power.
Thanks.
Hey, Keith.
How you doing, Anthony? Anthony, do me a favor. Instruct your council member about the First Amendment because he's trying to report me for a crime right now. Okay? And BJ did actually uphold the right, that I have the right to say whatever the fuck I want in a meeting. Please let him know that. He's a council member. You're the mayor. That is part of your job to do that. The First Amendment gives me the right to tell you to go fuck yourself in a public meeting, Herb. How you doing, Russ?
Good, John. How are you doing?
I'm good. Hey, if you want to contact me, I did actually settle with Upper Yoder Township in Nevada. They paid me a rather substantial settlement.
Is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, you can fact-check me on that, but I don't usually bullshit about stuff like that.
Yeah, I don't know if that... Is that...
That's where the officer decided to harass me.
Is that filed in the court system?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just waiting for my money. But actually, I wanted to give you a heads up about that. You know what I mean? I'm like, I will be issuing a press release. I'd like you guys to cover it, you know, at least something, you know? I mean, you know, I know you guys know that my... Me winning anything doesn't suit the Tribune's narrative.
Oh, they are swamped with stuff.
I understand, but I mean, you know, I mean, if a citizen is harassed by a local police officer and the police officer ends up resigning, I think that's newsworthy. I mean, I would... I'd read that article. I'll check it out. You know? So you want to... You have my number if you want to get at me for comment. You know, anytime, probably. And of course, like I'm telling you right now, okay? So as of today, what I just told you is, you know, it's live, but it's unofficial. But I can give you an official comment probably within the end of the month. Okay? Okay? Thanks, Russ. Have a good day, bud. Nice seeing you. So listen, appreciate you watching. Thanks for stopping by. Southmont Borough Council meeting. You know, and somebody else is not gonna stop. So, you know, if, you know, if I said I was gonna protect myself with a forty-four Magnum, the most powerful handgun in the world, I'd get... I'd get, you know... I'll be at my house in an hour for saying...